Mayor.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Esther.
Here.
Councilmember French.
Here.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Barrett.
Here.
Councilmember Florian.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman Holden.
Here.
And West.
Present.
Senator Moore.
Here.
Please rise for the pleasure of the ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. We are going to move on to the public comment period. So we've got a list here of folks who signed up. So when you come up to the mic, please state your name and whether you live in this city or not. Marilyn Etch.
Hi, my name is Marilyn Etch and I live on Hillcrest in Port Angeles. And I'm a member of the Compassion Column County Steering Committee. And when I was councillor, I always asked the question, "Why now?" when someone came for help or was starting a new project. One of my "why nows" for engaging with Compassion Column County came for my volunteer work with the Met and Neighborhood Program. I was inviting my neighbors over and when I went to invite a certain neighbor I didn't know well, he said, "I have what I need for a year and all it does is protect my wife and my house." And he finger pointed at me and said, "Do you?" And then he expounded on his guns. And obviously, I was taken back. But after doing some active listening and about his desire to protect, I asked if he could share some of his construction skills and also help the elderly lady on our block if there were a disaster. And he actually agreed. And so we actually have a really cool neighborhood and he has been an Eagle Scout and could help with first aid. So this is a situation I wasn't expecting, but compassion really opened up some possibilities. I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about compassion. And the way that we would like to use it with Compassion Column County comes from the Center for Compassion, Integrity, and Secular Ethics. And we would like to introduce it as a skill set. So compassion is the desire to address the needs of another grounded in care for their well-being. At a basic level, this skill requires noticing another's needs, experiencing empathic concern and feeling empowered to act skillfully and meaningfully. Compassion motivates us to act, but it doesn't tell us what to do. So it needs to be paired with discernment, critical thinking, and knowledge of the situation. Since January, we've engaged over 250 citizens in the study of skillful compassion and had over 40 people from healthcare, education, business, agriculture, government, social service, and law enforcement present how using compassion in their work has improved outcome, decision-making, or morale. So the good news is compassion is biologically based. We all have it. It releases endorphins, has great health and social benefits. The bad news is that it tends to befriend bonding response, also tends to define who is not in our in-group. So what happened with the neighbor was I was able, with a few moments of compassionate listening, to expand the in-group to include our neighborhood. And what we would like to do as part of this campaign is to help him and others expand that in-group to our whole city and then to our county. And we would also like to present in August, if we could, on the agenda.
And I sent some stuff to you.
Thank you.
Benji?
Ostrakon. Don't worry about it. Everyone, no one gets it. Hi there, my name is Benji Ostrakon. I live on South Munis Street off Lorritson. I'm in Merrick or Vista. I'm serving with the WSU Cloudon County Extension just across the way in Cork House as a community foods project coordinator, long title. So I work in projects to address food insecurity and barriers to food access in Cloudon County. So at the WSU Extension, our mission-wide, our organization-wide mission is to engage people, organizations, and communities to advance knowledge, economic well-being, and quality of life by fostering inquiry, learning, and application of research. Quite meaningful. Now, within our Cloudon office, we've identified values for successful and meaningful engagement in the community. These are communication, patience, support, trust, enthusiasm, and compassion, which is one I will speak a bit more about today. So compassion is really important to our work and to the mission of the Extension Offices in the way that we strive to address different inequalities, inequities, and to create opportunity within the food system that all of us are part of. Many people in Cloudon are struggling to feed themselves and their families. We're actually the fourth highest county for adult food insecurity in the state of Washington and second for childhood food insecurity in the state. And so creating a rounded solution to that that actually addresses barriers to food access, emphasizes health and well-being, and supports local farms and food processors is obviously a difficult undertaking and requires a lot of different solutions from a lot of different actors. The role of compassion in this work is to understand the unique struggles of our community members and to create solutions that will improve their quality of life. Across the Extension's many programs, this has looked like everything, from partnerships between food banks and local farms to launching incentive programs at farmers' markets to improve access to healthy food for low-income community members, to spearheading the establishments of new farmers' markets in rural and tribal areas in the county. In all of this, our Cloudon Extension Office commits itself to compassion in the way that we care for and create opportunities for Cloudon residents to learn, grow, and live happier and healthier lives. This evening, one project that I'd specifically like to bring up is one I've been working on. This is to fill what was an apparent need when I started this job for a comprehensive list across the county of different food resources available to people who struggle day-to-day with hunger. So although our Extension Office excels at system changes and creating upstream solutions, we recognize the need for downstream intervention-style solutions to address the daily issues that people face of feeding themselves and their families. So organized by location, this list includes resources such as food banks, pantries, free community and faith organization meals, school-based food resources for families, social service information, farmers' markets, grocery store programs that can help stretch food benefit dollars to the end of the month, everything possible to help people get by. And so a lot of different organizations, including the PSHS Office down the street and statewide groups like Food Lifeline have already made this available. And so I'd like to ask the city to put this on their website wherever appropriate to make sure that people have access to that information. We really need it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lorraine Mallory?
Yes. I'm Lorraine Mallory and I live on Glenwood Street. And I'm here to say we really need to have city animal control for many reasons. But the other day, I went outside of my house and there was a very sick dying cat laying in my driveway. I don't know if it had rabies or what. I tried everything. I called to find an animal control. They said, "There is no such thing. That is your problem. You figure it out." I tried everything. I called Pet Posse. They had no hope for me. And while I was in the house trying to get help, my neighbor killed this cat in my yard. He beat it to death. And if I would have been able to find an animal control, maybe I could have got it somewhere where it could have been humanely euthanized. Anyway, I just believe we need to have animal control because the Pet Posse also told me that there's many, many animals running around all over the place in our town. It was hanging up. And I've seen this cat many times before and I tried to report it. And there was just no help for me. And I'm like 71 years old. I had no way to help this thing. And then I had to dispose of its body because there was nothing. And I just, you know, I'm one person and this is one cat. But I just felt this is something I needed to say because in 1996, I took a class where I was in criminal justice and I rode around with animal control for a week. And I saw the things that he did. And he did really good work. And the Pet Posse said they tried to get involved in this and help and that they would do this for free, but there were so many lawyers involved and so much trouble. They could do nothing. So all they can do is go around and rescue the ones they can still save. But maybe, you know, like they said, I hope this never happens to me again, which I'm sure it never will. But it was a pretty horrible experience for me and that poor animal. So that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And do you have information on the Humane Society? Because I know we have a contact.
Mayor, we do have information on the Humane Society, but I believe that the district should that was described with falls under animal control. And so that's the function of the Quicks Program.
Okay, thank you. All right, Gary Jordan?
I'm Gary Jordan. I live at 424 East 6th Street. That's less than three minutes walk from here. Came to Port Angeles maybe four years ago. It's a nice place. If you look that way or that way, if you live here, it's a nice place. That's why people come here, live here. That's why people who are from here continue to live here. Best-case scenario. I'm here to encourage the city council. Can I think about this? Code enforcement. Worst-case scenario. Or best-case scenario, somebody has a little dog in the car in their yard and, well, you know, their leaves go over the driveway. And come on, just settle us amongst yourselves. Let's turn the budget here. Budget, 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 budget. Quality of life. That's what the city council's supposed to do, to think. Okay. Or it's one thing to be... Worst-case scenario. Well, y'all come on out to the ranch, okay? It's like, worst-case scenario, a controlled animal feeding operation. You know, there's laws about that in the state, okay? Your... Within just over 10 feet from my bedroom, where I try to sleep, is piles, piles of animal feces. What we have here is a high-production, high-ball-operation animal feces production facility. And the birth child of these, of this, is... Ogre rats, flies, and more animal feces. The people have never cleaned it up, ever. Piles half as high as the city council. Well, as you know, we have no code enforcement. I'd like to urge you to rethink that. And of course, I don't know where you live, but I know where you don't live. And this doesn't impact you at all. We didn't raise taxes. This is a great deal. Worst-case scenario, it can be really bad. And that's, you know, that's... I don't, you know... Code enforcement is good for the community and, you know, obviously, it would be good for me. But I'm not here asking for you to do anything for me that you wouldn't do for the whole community. And worst-case scenario, again. That's all I can say. And that's all you can hear or don't care. I'll go back to you.
Thank you. Brendan Meyer.
Good evening. My name is Brendan Meyer. I'm a citizen here in Port Angeles. Today, I'm just going to be talking real quick about the emergency declaration and the locomotive for asbestos incident here. It says we paid $39,000 for the cleanup and there's still lots of cleanup to do. I'd like the city council to take into consideration... I understand the historical significance of the locomotive, but take into consideration the actual just getting rid of the locomotive and maybe installing some kind of art display to take its place. So we don't have to continually pay for the asbestos. And also, one of these, we're here, locomotive is also forked, so maybe reach out to them too and let them know it's full of asbestos. So thank you.
Laurel Harjes.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I want to comment on the Charter of Compassion Resolution that was discussed at the last council meeting. One concern that was expressed basically is, does this border on religion, thereby violating the principle of the separation of church and state? Unquestionably, the preservation of this principle is vital to a democracy. To answer this concern, it should be noted that contributions for the draft of the charter were made on a multilingual website with over 160,000 contributions from all over the world. These comments were then provided to an interfaith council comprised of six of the world's major faith traditions to compose the final draft. Also, I think that we need not feel uncomfortable with the role of compassion in secular life and institutions. It already exists. There are plenty of examples of secular compassion. When Councilmember Moran reported on his ride along with Officer Mike, I believe it was, he observed how the officer dealt with the homeless with such humanity and respect. And he expressed his admiration and appreciation for that. The cop and the councilman exhibiting compassion. Jonas Salk, the scientist who invented the polio vaccine, then refused to personally profit from it by patenting it. An act of compassion from a scientist. Secondly, I would like to address a question that was raised during the meeting. Councilmember Meredith asked the question, and I'm really roughly paraphrasing, but essentially, do we really need to declare these values? Don't we already adhere to these, believe in these? Why do we have to say it? My answer to that would be, our world is dangerously polarized. There is so much escalating rage and alienation. This unfortunately is reflected here in our own community. I remember a recent incident of visitors to our town who were confronted and threatened because of their ethnicity. Because this was such a disturbing incident, some in the council felt compelled to counter it by making an outward declaration that this is not who we are as a community, rather than just lead it to assumption. Maybe what we need is some type of formal declaration as a counter to what I fear will be more and more of these types of incidents. And maybe we can just let the Compassion Charter serve that purpose. One thing I like about the Compassion Charter is that it is not a statement against something, but rather for something. This, I believe, is key. In our current times, the voices of hate, greed, fear, and intolerance are getting louder and louder. Therefore, maybe merely stating our opposition is not enough to overcome these forces. Maybe it would be more powerful and effective to provide an alternative, which I believe Compassion Charter does accomplish. Thank you very much.
Randall McCoy.
Good evening, I'm Randall McCoy. I live at 112 East 11th Street. And I wanted to bring to the council's attention the current state of our bicycle-friendly community. We have had that status since 2015 in large part due to the late George Bergner and the former Public Works Director Craig Fulton, who used to be the chairman of the Bicycle Advocacy Advisory Committee of the Port Angeles and Cloudon County. I am currently the chairman. As you know, I really do some public speaking. So what I'd like to do is encourage the city to help us on our application. We're in the process of trying to renew it. The renewal process has lapsed... Our renewal period has lapsed since February and the next deadline is August. And we really need some help because the current application has changed since the last time we did the application, requiring us to do some very specific data that requires road engineering information and GIS information that we do not have. Things like speed limits, shoulder widths, shoulder widths during and in certain speed limits, how many miles of bike lane you have, all of that. Some of that I can do, but there's stuff that both the city and the county need to help us with. Therefore, if we could encourage the council to encourage the staff to get involved with this and try to get us some of that data so that we can finish this application, that would be greatly appreciated. Bicycle-friendly community status is a great benefit to the city economically because we have bicycle tourism here. We have... We also have touring cyclists here. As you know, yesterday, the Canadians came over, 30 of them. And in years past, there've been over 100 of them actually coming over here to go ride the hurricane. Two days ago, I was down at the bike shop getting my tire fixed and a gentleman from Texas was touring and he gave directions on how to get to Salt Creek. And so I gave directions on how to use the Olympic Discovery Trail and to beware of 112. And hopefully, one of these days, we can get the Olympic Discovery Trail to go off of 112 and get us where we need to go out to Lake Crescent and beyond. So thank you for your time and hopefully I can get some staff time to get some data for us so we can finish our application. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Kay Castinger?
Kay Castinger with Penetza Housing Authority. Besides the business in the city, I also live in the city. As we're all aware, PA is experiencing severe housing shortage. And an issue requiring public as well as private resources to build out of is what's going to be required. During the last state legislative session, substitute HB 1406 was enacted into law. This is an act to encourage investments in affordable and supportive housing. This bill allows cities and counties to access a tax credit, as a tax credit, a percentage of the state's sales and use taxes for a 20-year period. The funds get used to finance loans or grants to nonprofits or housing authorities to acquire, build, rehabilitate, or especially in small cities, to pay rental assistance for affordable housing. The funds can also be used for bond payment if the city issues general obligation or revenue bonds according to this law. We've all been looking and talking about how we can affect the affordable housing issues and increase the stock here in Port Angeles. And this legislation provides the city with a new financial tool in this quest for additional affordable housing. My purpose in speaking tonight is to ask the city to review this legislation and consider enacting the resolution of intent to impose the tax credit. This, I'm not exactly sure what the costs, what it would provide to us, but it would offer other agencies besides mine the opportunity to increase the housing stock in the community. And as I said, it's got to be a public-private partnership because we, as an agency, cannot build out this problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for that. Elizabeth Dunn.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Dunn. I live in Port Angeles, Washington. And I'm here to follow up on an invitation that I think all the members of city council received to a film, a special screening of "Dam to Extinction", which is a film that is at Penetza College on July 11th. That's Thursday, July 11th, 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. And I said, "City council received the invitation." Want to extend that to, of course, the administration and staff and everyone here. The film explores the relationship between the Southern Residence Orcas and the Chinook, the native Chinook salmon in the Snake River. And it does an excellent job of explaining the connection between those two. For those that don't know, the Southern Residence Orcas are in a perilous state. They're basically on the brink of extinction. There's only 76 left. And this is not just an opportunity to see the film, but it's an opportunity afterwards, there's a panel of basically the experts in this field. And there's been a few screenings of this film so far, but this is the first one with all of these experts coming together. So it's a great opportunity. Ken Dalcom, the founder of Synophore Oil Research, is going to be there. And he's been studying and basically living with the Southern Residence for his entire career. Jim Waddell was with Army Corps Engineers for 35 years and has intimate knowledge about the Lower Snake River dams and how we can breach them and why they need to be breached immediately. And Howard Garrett, the founder of the Orca Network. And also Chris Penny, who's a recently retired senior biologist with the U.S. Army Corps Engineers. And he also has a lot of really pertinent information about what's been going on with the dams and what needs to be done and what can be done. So again, I just wanted to extend that invitation. I think that as a failed state community, we should have concern for what's happening with the Southern Residence. It's an issue getting national and international attention. And I think as city councilmembers and all of us can have an important voice in what needs to be done. So please come again. That's July 11th at Penetza College, 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's everybody on our list. So if there's anybody else in the audience who would like to speak to council at this time, please step up to the mic. So seeing none, we will move on. And council, if you don't mind, we have under further consideration the Value of Trees presentation by John Farnsworth. I'd like to move it up right after, you know, right in the audience. Will you agree with that? All right. So John, if you could please... Do this wonderful presentation on the value of trees here.
Hello. Can you hear me okay? My screen is off. Great, so thank you for having me out tonight. I know my... The subject matter of urban forestry doesn't really coincide with tonight's agenda, but I was asked to come out a few months ago and kept talking about municipal tree ordinances and how those work in cities. And...
I think it might have minimized when I opened because I opened.
There we go. And basically... Yeah, so I just come out and talk about municipal tree ordinances and how this function within cities. I own and possess my own group. We do natural resource planning and urban forest planning across Washington and Oregon. I listen to some of the other communities that we've worked with in municipal code guidance and policy review. And I don't know if this was printed off, but there's a lot of content in this presentation and I'm going to kind of keep it short for tonight. But if you want copies of it, I'll just email it off tomorrow. I would even see everything on there and read it. So a common request that we have from municipalities is kind of a gap analysis, understanding what's missing and what could be accomplished, kind of offering conclusions and recommendations on gaps that are found within urban forest policies and codes, inequities, discrepancies, things like that. And that's kind of what we did here with Port Angeles just in the last couple of days. My staff and I worked on this. A background, board served by Master Robert, the only one appearing in the concept. There's only 20 of us in the state. I'm also... I sit on the executive advisory council of the Washington Community Forestry Council. And that's about me. So just briefly, I quit at 10:00 different nights. It's going to be, you know, I'm going to talk briefly about the benefits of urban trees in our area, what are tree ordinances. I might skip a section of that just because of time. And then the three elements of effective tree ordinances, code support and enforcement. And then a conclusion based on what I found and interpreted. So what is urban and community forestry? Urban community forestry represents all of the green space,[1792.34] Urban community forestry represents all of the green space, all the green assets within a jurisdictional boundary. This includes public trees on streets, public trees in parks, open space, green space, native forests, trees and vegetation on private properties. All these different green assets. Urban community forests are shared community assets which provide substantial benefits, which I'll talk about on the next slide, briefly. You know, it's widely understood in the urban forest and social scientific communities that urban trees enhance and amplify, enhance and amplify our human well-being, improve economic vibrancy, and improve the environment. So, just a quick, you know, this is the one that you read all over. But I just wanted to talk about, you know, some of the big concepts with urban forests. The concept of environmental improvement, that's easy to grasp. That's a really quick and easy thing. The things about human health impacts and social impacts, it's a really abstract concept. That's really going to come out with science in the last 10 to 15, 20 years. It's a brand-new concept. And understandably, it is a little abstract when you say that patients in hospitals, room space, green spaces have faster recovery rates and less pain relief medically. It's pretty, you know, it's pretty abstract. We work in a lot of cities in Washington that are post-logging communities, post-forest extraction communities. And in those cities, we know that a lot of, you know, forests provide timber for homes and when trees are harvested sustainably, forests provide economic growth. In urban and community environments where the vast majority of people live, work and play, trees provide other benefits which we identify as services, not really the provisional services that, or the provisional benefits that forests provide. You know, some of these services are human health, economic, environmental, sorry, social, human health, economic and environmental improvement. Since the 80s, there's been an international enormous volume of work about trees increase property values, how, I just mentioned, the decreased hospital time, and increased growth in downtown districts. And I encourage you to read this later on. I'm going to skip the history on tree ordinances. Basically, it's a, you know, it's not a new concept. It's been around since quite a while. So, there's three little functional elements of effective tree ordinances. And they kind of, you know, it's maybe even more so than a tree ordinances, but in general. And we're looking at community-specific adopted codes. So, looking at code that is written for a community, not just for, you know, not copied and pasted, not just selected on the internet and put in there. It's community-specific, we need enforcement, and we need community and stakeholder support. Without any of those, you're just not going to get the same benefits you need for the same result. And, you know, the ordinance will be ineffective and inaccessible. So, just a quick talk about the community stakeholder support item. Preserving and maintaining a healthy urban canopy is a public good. That's been, kind of throughout the U.S., cities have been looking at that. Counties and states are identifying urban trees as a public good. You know, public good is one, is a product that an individual could consume without reusing its availability to others. In my experience, when people are presented with the benefits of urban trees, more concretely, can actually identify with tree benefits that they themselves receive, those people are much more likely to support and stand behind ordinances than to amplify tree benefits. And that kind of boils down into, you know, people who have trees around them can see those trees. Preserving and maintaining a healthy tree, healthy urban canopy is a part of that. So, urban trees and especially street trees amplify human experience and economic growth, increase property values, reduce energy costs, increase spending. That's a huge component of street trees. People spend more money across the U.S. and across many other countries. People just want to spend more money. They're more comfortable in downtown areas. These are all great things. When people understand that trees are a living asset, which becomes, you know, some municipal and a community equity, people are more driven to support that. Research on municipal and, sorry, research on municipal tree care and municipal tree benefits show that planting and maintaining a healthy tree for 15 to 25 years, somewhere around there, which is a fraction of a tree, you know, or which is a fraction of a tree's life, will provide a return on tree care costs to that city. So statistically, community trees are an equity, not a liability. Sorry, timer. I think I'm talking too fast, but, okay. Perfect. So, yeah, statistically, community trees are not an equity and not a liability. So, moving on to this community-specific adopted code. Part of our gap analysis, we realized that PA has a lot of great, has a lot of great code. Chapter 11, number 13, street trees. This is exactly what I just said, and it's in ordinance 3511, adopted 2014. This maintains that street trees are a pivotal asset to urban character, provide important environmental benefits, and increase property values more. So, this is currently in PA code. What we found with the other identification of code in the gap analysis was that the code is highly focused on low-impact development, high-density developments, commercial developments, is, everything except street trees is development-driven. So, like, if you don't have a development or you're not moving forward development, then trees aren't really a part of that. Or, on the whole other side, trees in environmentally sensitive areas, which is a whole different topic. And these are some of the specific code, the specific tree-related codes that we found in PA. So, a couple of ones that were common trends we see across Washington and Oregon that were not in PA code were basically, you know, two main ones is the protection of trees on private property and the protection of inward trees. Many cities limit the number of trees that property owners can remove in a single year, so notwithstanding some sort of development or improvement on their land. Right? You want to build a garage, take out some trees. No reason whatsoever, maybe you can limit the amount of trees you can remove annually. A short story I have, nearly three years ago now, I was contacted by a group of homeowners, homeowners north of Peninsula College, who were distraught that their little forested neighborhood was being clear cut, or one of the neighbors was clear cutting, it was a brand-new neighbor. That brand-new neighbor removed nearly 15 large, mature, healthy trees in just a maybe six-month period of time. These trees were between 50 and 100 years old, and they're all now gone. You know, there are many treeless properties in Port Angeles to purchase, and now there's one more, unrecognized by the individual. I looked at him over the last three years on Zillow, and he reduced his property value by nearly $40,000. And he reduced the neighborhood property level additionally. So, his neighbors all additionally received, have less property values now. And another important topic is, and I guess just back up a second. That's exactly where a lot of cities we work in have annual, you know, we can't remove more than three or four trees per year, or there needs to be a reason for doing that. You know, a high-risk tree, a dead tree, or development of some sort. You know, another important topic here in PA is, like many other Washington cities on the Puget Sound and the Surrata One de Huga, we have a very highly gradient community. It's very sloped. And, you know, sometimes it requires management of planting of trees to protect views. Views are very important for property owners. And many cities have adopted a specific tree code on how those trees in views are managed. So, there exists, third element is enforcement. And this kind of relates back to a public comment on enforcement officers. You know, there exists enforcement sponsors in PA municipal code, 1100 above. There's vehicles for enforcement. It seems that, just in the last, you know, five years, it seems that there's, the real issue is staff, availability, and a designated enforcement officer. Without that, it's, the entire thing doesn't work. And I'm aware that the city has not had an enforcement officer since 2012, I believe it is. Seven years now. Furthermore, when Scott Johns, U.S. certified arborist, and associate landowner, he retired with the city in 2016. At that point, I believe, most tree-related compliance was lost. I haven't really seen anything since then. And this whole thing is causing a serious deficit in the city's urban forest equity. And, you know, enforcement, I wish I had more slides on that specific thing. I have a slide with examples, but enforcement is serious. So, these are examples of top trees, top city street trees in Port Angeles. Top trees significantly reduce, sorry, significantly elevate the risk of tree failure, property damage, reduce property values, it creates a negative public perception, and it decreases neighborhood character. We can't have healthy street trees if we don't enforce municipal code aimed at improving the urban forest or we don't enforce compliance with adjacent property owners and their tenants or renters. So, some conclusions from our analysis. Number one is appoint a tree board to help with decision-making and delegate responsibility to lighten the load on city staff. You know, this isn't my first council meeting here or in many other cities. And trees are not the only issue. You can understand there's a lot of issues going on that need to be addressed. Delegate their responsibility. I've written up a sample code, which I believe was printed out, which designates and appoints a tree board or a tree advisory, a board of some sort. And I think that is the first step in the right direction towards a healthy, sustainable forest. Number two, conclusion number two, is that we need to enforce compliance on adjacent landowners who top their street trees. Use this compliance to fund and plant more trees, or street trees. Number three is when action occurs, relieve street trees. Sorry, relieve the city of street trees, like a development or a high-risk tree or just a tree, you know, a wrong tree in a wrong place. Require that action mitigated by a reinstallation of street trees. Don't just have a net loss there, but proactively do something about that. Replant their appropriate trees. So, that's my conclusions on the risk, sorry, on the gap analysis. Tree board, enforce something, hire enforcement officer. Number three is replant trees when they're taken out. And that's it. Any questions? I don't know if we have time for questions.
So, a question for you is that, I do know that some folks hire people to have their trees topped without realizing that that's not a good practice. And so, does the tree association, I mean, I guess in your license license, does that do anything to try to help that problem too?
No, so there's no, there's no active licensing for tree workers or arborists. The arbor certification is an international certification based off of, nothing really concrete local. An individual with a chainsaw and a truck can be hired, and a business license equally, can be hired to top your trees. What we see often is somebody paid that person to do it. And also, you know, we see dual compliance and dual enforcement with the contractor and the property owner who paid that person. On, in a, in a one city we work in, there was an issue where the homeowners, property owners would, you know, if they encountered a respectful company who said, "No, we can't do that. It's just not, you know, it's even against code. Against the code, we're not going to do that." They just went and hired another unrecognizable company. And that wasn't really fixed until they spread out the enforcement.
Yeah, because I do know that we've had, I know it felt like the spring was the rash of trees being topped all over the city.
In education, I mean, that's, so a couple of cities have just held events, you know, one-day event or half-day event for tree workers who, just to educate them. Some people don't know, you know, some people don't really know this kind of a more cultural science. So, providing that information might be helpful.
Great. Thank you. Any questions from the council?
So, you talked about managing of trees and view sheds. How is that? Can you explain more about that? Yeah, so it's a complicated subject. That's the first one, so, yeah. When we manage trees and view sheds, we're really looking at complexity. So, you know, what is your view shed? Is your view shed a 273 view of Surrata One de Huga, or is it a couple of isolated areas? When your view shed encounters people below ground who are, you know, below your slope that have trees that they want to keep, do you have a right to the view shed? Usually, you don't. In some situations, you do. So, usually, in practice, what we do is we try to isolate what view shed is appropriate or what view shed was historically designated. And then from there, we identify the trees that are outside of that historical view shed.
Any others? Any other questions? Thank you, John. Really appreciate the presentation.
And you said you would email the presentation?
Yes, I'll, I'll, thank you.
John, we'd be happy to distribute this to councils, being that we already have it on the network.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy to.
All right, so let's get back to our, the rest of our agenda. So, are there any lead items?
Just following up on the public comments, there are a lot of public comments, of course, but one that seemed somewhat time-sensitive was whether the staff gave any direction to the council on supporting renewal of the bicycle-friendly community status.
I don't believe Mr. McCoy is still in the audience, but I think we definitely really interested in starting off with the conversation to gather a little bit more detail on the data that's necessary, what the magnitude of that task is. But to start out with that conversation, we're happy to go ahead and have that conversation with Mr. McCoy, and following that conversation will let you know if it's a larger project that might require a substantial commitment. But at the same, I don't know, I would say that, yes, there was a great deal of work that went into the first application, and we'd like to sit down with Mr. McCoy and talk about it. Thank you.
All right, so no lead items from anybody, right? So, let's go on to the consent agenda. Any items that need to be pulled from the consent agenda for anybody? Okay, work agreements.
City council minutes on June 18th, 2019. Expenditure report from June 8th, 2019 to June 21st, 2019 in the amount of $1,655,809.09. A material purchase, pad, monitor, electronic transformer contract, resolution to ratify emergency declaration, and release of utility easement. Future PA waterfront center site.
A little extension, is ready?
Second.
Any, we've got a motion to accept the consent agenda as read. Any further discussion?
In regard to the minutes, I made a lead item to designate voting delegates from the Association of Washington Cities, and I think there's some typos in there. And that item was in other considerations, but it wasn't a think-tank item. And so, that just should be included, because the think-tank items usually don't become motions out of the same item.
No, you won't make those changes. All right, any further discussion? So, all those are...
And just to speak on the resolution around vibrant declaration, I think that this is a time where we need to address that, you know, this low motive had asbestos damage. It was fairly expensive to clean up the exposed portion, but there is still a lot of asbestos in there. And we, at some point, might have to acknowledge this is a community asset that's too expensive for us to maintain and fix in the long term. And it does need to be in some way... And it does need to be in some way re-responsibly disposed of.
And council, if I may also speak to that, I will just share that obviously there's more information to come. At this point in time, all we're asking for is just ratification of an emergency that did take place. Obviously, we had asbestos on the ground, we needed to deal with it, and we did so. But there's a lot more information to be provided to council in the future and obviously some big decisions to make relative to that locomotive.
Thank you.
So by my point, I want to thank Director Hunter for the total lifecycle cost assessment in the path of electric transformers, not just looking at the cost of purchase them, but the cost over their entire life cycle. So thank you for providing that information.
And I'd like to thank every director, show each of your members' comments.
He's, he's a gem.
All right, any further discussion? All those who favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass it to the members. All right, next thing is the ordinances, the amendment to the electric utility code.
Ladies and council, this is quite simply the second reading. Just kind of to reiterate, since the second reading proposed changes to several sections of the city's municipal code relating to the utility, these changes seek to simplify sections of the code and/or update sections to reflect current operational costs and processes. So once again, second reading, I think it's pretty straightforward. If you have any other questions, we can answer those this time.
All right, let me read the ordinance. An ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, have been sectioned of the Port Angeles Municipal Code relating to electric services and charges.
I'm going to adopt the ordinance as read.
Second. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Are there any discussion?
Were there any changes between the first and second reading? There were none, thanks.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ordinance passes unanimously. So next one will be changes to the wastewater utility for the Angeles Municipal Code, second reading. So it's on second reading, that's first one.
Yes, and again, this is the second reading. Second reading, proposed updates several sections of the city's municipal code related to the wastewater utility. First reading was the 18th of 2019. In essence, the utility seeks to raise the level of pH level for discharges to be consistent with safe regulation. We essentially had a lower threshold before, so we're trying to just get consistent with the safe regulation there. Clarifying some language, it was really important, Star Service Establishments, the rates and consistencies, and then just mainly fix on graphical errors. So it is to note that there's no funding impact with this ordinance and having these reports.
I have a question, but just if you can reinforce my understanding based on a conversation we had in the utility advisory committee. Because I think often when you hear we want to raise limits, it sounds bad, but our understanding from that conversation is that raising the pH is actually better in, overall. So we want to be in compliance and the reason it's the level that it is at the state is that that's a better level. I can't articulate quite what I'm trying to say, but this is a good move. It's not we're being more lax, we're actually making a better choice.
My understanding that that is correct and oftentimes it's rather difficult to track all of the changes that come out of the EPA and over time things will kind of slip through. So this is really a consistency and yes, it actually is better for us, supposedly. I believe that we're moving from 10, maybe somewhere 10 or 11 to a consistency, yes.
All right, so we look at that ordinance and ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, and then a chapter 13, 4.6, industrial wastewater regulations of the Port Angeles Municipal Code.
I'm going to adopt that ordinance. Second.
All right, so we have a motion on the table in a second. Any further discussion?
Any changes from the first reading?
No.
And then with the pH, when I first started, I was like, wait a second. We can be stricter than the state. So the consistency argument didn't really fly in my head. But as I thought about it more, with pH, you know, seven is neutral. So if we're able to provide a balance of sitting in basic materials going down the drain, eventually when they hit, well, the stormwater plant or the water treatment plant, we end up potentially with more basic, I'm sorry, with a more neutral solution. So the explanation from staff is really hopeful there at the utility advisory committee. I think the challenge is whenever you deal with a negative logarithmic scale, things are really confusing. So it's kind of like we're allowing somebody to now discharge, you know, something that's more the pH ammonia and not just the pH of anything. So that's kind of maybe where to think about it. But then that offsets by the time it gets down to the wastewater treatment plant. And then one final thing to say is that out of utility advisory committee, we did not advance part of these changes that concern the contaminant levels for dischargers, and that's something that staff is reviewing further, and it is something that I do want to continue to move forward. But we had some questions about it, at least some comments at the utility advisory committee. So that is something that was brought forward, but we don't want to lose track of that.
And just a point to mention is that we are, we did have a meeting with Department of Ecology to really walk through some of those details. And we subsequently just approved it, I would go off to Ecology, kind of capturing how that meeting went and what the direction was. It doesn't sound like we're going to get a definitive answer right away. It sounds like we're going to go through a process to a value to further evaluate it and get a different occurrence. So the meeting was very beneficial and we did a really good job for staff to really be able to capturing what that possibly did, a true evaluation and not use a guess at it, if you will. So there will be more to come back to the UAC on the topic.
All right, folks, we have a motion over to people to pass this ordinance. Second, are there any further discussion, any further comments? Okay, all those who favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The passing unanimously. So we are on to the management, restructure range adjustment for the 2019 cost of living adjustment, management of the straight-up and non-representative personnel. And then secret.
Managerial council, tonight I'm happy to provide council a memorandum and resolution for the restructuring salary schedule, range adjustments, and overall cost of living adjustments to the management non-representative group of the city. The resolution and the associated exhibit provides some changes consistent with two previous council-approved contracts with unions at the city, as well as additionally tonight's, sorry, additionally, the action incorporates and finalizes multiple prior council decisions relative to staff position changes. Specifically, these included some changes restructuring the Public Works and Utilities Department, as well as some changes that are being presented for the first time this evening to our Finance Department that also results in restructuring. Overall, the public works restructuring that's incorporated in the salary scale resulted in the savings of $72,000. And the Finance Department Accounting Division restructuring that is being provided as part of the salary, salary scale adjustment resulted in a savings of $8,400. So ultimately, we did have some savings. There are some additional costs associated with the cost of living adjustment. There were a number of modifications to specific position scale, many of which went down, many of which went up. Those were listed specifically in Exhibit A, which is the salary scale associated with the resolution itself. I want to point out that you do have on your diocese a revised resolution. One of the matters that was not taken into account in the resolution that went out with the packet is the fact that the math was not actually incorporated for the 2.5% cost of living adjustment in the salary scale. The resolution that's been provided on your diocese doesn't recognize that. Typically, we wait for council approval or passing of the resolution before we actually do the math, adjust the salary scale as a whole. And so that's what we've done in this scenario too. The resolution just didn't have that clarification and now it does. So thank you for your understanding on that. I do want to draw your attention as well to the new structure for the Accounting Division and Finance on page H17. It's important to clarify that it was intended that the Finance Director oversees the Accounting Division as well as both Management Accounts, which we do think is a much more efficient approach for the Finance Department. At this time, staff has recommended that council pass the resolution and approve the reorganization of the Finance Department Accounting Division. We'd be happy to answer any additional questions that council might have on the side.
Any further discussion, ladies?
Yes. I'm happy to see the changes. The reorganization is well thought out, extremely efficient, and I appreciate that we can take advantage of this now and put it into place. I've heard comments over the years of improper balance and management issues, and I believe that this has been thoroughly vetted by staff and they're bringing us a much better organizational chart, and I really appreciate it and I will certainly support it. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? So let me read the resolution. A resolution of the city council of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, approving the changes to the salary schedule attached as Exhibit A, and approving a 2.5% increase to the salary schedule effective January 1st, 2019 for the city's non-representative management and administrative personnel. I move to approve as read. Second. Is there any further discussion? So all those in favor of the motion?
Sorry, I'm going to just make a comment that, you know, the, the cost of living adjustment is, the cost of living adjustment, what does that mean? Okay, inflation, it costs more to live, you know, food, transportation, and all that stuff goes up. But when we talk about salaries that are six-digit salaries and we're just adding 2.5%, that's not actually a cost of living. All right, cost of living might be the first $50,000 of that, maybe it's the first $75,000 of that, but it's not the entire thing. So as we go forward, we should be careful about what we call this. And it's, I think it's disingenuous to call the entire thing in the way we've done a cost of living increase.
So I'm going to be supporting the motion. I appreciate Lizzy's comments in that, you know, really what this is, is this is a cost of the competitive adjustment. You know, we have, number one, we need to treat our staff fairly. If, you know, in accordance with how we negotiate with our unions, I think we should treat our non-respondents fairly in that. But also, you know, if we are not competitive in how our salaries are being done, we will lose staff. We've had significant turnover and we don't want to see that continue. We want to see a team that's solid, that's going to be moving forward, that, for example, that we treated fairly. And so, you know, I think that this is a reasonable decision that we're making and I will support it. I also want to ask you, is that a motion to approve the rest of the reorganization in Accounting Division?
No.
Okay, so that's included in our motion. All right.
Any further discussion?
So in response to the council member's French, and that's really a point, right? So we have openings, we have challenges filling openings, not necessarily in this group, but in general for the city. And so sometimes people say, us as representatives of the city, you know, the costs are too high, you know, utilities are too high, or, you know, where does all the money go, or maintenance pay too much? And, you know, the, the challenge is we still have trouble filling some of our positions. So how do we stay competitive with other municipalities or with the private sector? And salaries is a big way that we do that. So I, I think the larger issue here is that it's not, the, the problem isn't that city staff salaries are too high, it's that there's too much precarity for other sectors of the economy. And positions that used to be genuinely middle-class positions are now seen as more affluent positions in our society in general. So I mean, I guess my thought is how do we rectify that larger macroeconomic condition? Not so much how do we, how do we solve that within these sorts of decisions that we're about to move on.
All right, any further discussion? All right, we have a motion on the table in a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The passing unanimously. All right, folks, we are now on to other considerations. It is 7:00 o'clock, everybody need a break? All right, looks like we're going to continue on. So we will move to the think tank discussion. As I promised last time, the Charter of Compassion for County, it's in the packet, and this one is specifically called County. We wanted it to be specific for Port Angeles, but, and along with that, what was also printed was a why compassion, compassion in action, and what can I do? And I note that as well, that Marilyn mentioned that you had been sent a link to the city of Lacy. So I, we didn't want to go too long because I know we have a lot of AWC information that we wanted to cover, but are there any comments right now that you have on the Charter of Compassion?
I just haven't made a comment up until now, and I just wanted to say, I'm glad the Charter of Compassion is lovely. It's reminiscent of things I learned in Sunday School as a child, or things that I discussed in civic groups or at home. I just feel that my responsibility as elected official to uphold the Constitution of the United States is just, it's just not my job description, so I'll be passing on as far as city. But I think it's lovely and I'm looking forward to further comments on it in the community and appropriate groups, appropriate time and appropriate places.
And anybody else would like to comment on this right now?
I just appreciated the refresher on the history of it from Marilyn, how, how we got to where we are today. I felt like I was missing some pieces about, about all of it. And some that I remembered as, as you were telling me that, going through that, but, but that was a helpful piece for me to sort of get a refresher on the background. So thank you for taking the time to come.
So I raised a number of concerns with the original version that was presented to us because I felt like a number of the phrases were specifically religious. I don't see that in this version before us today. So I'm not sure, you know, we can take different views of the First Amendment to the US Constitution or parts of the Washington Constitution, but I don't see an argument in the text of this document that says that we can't affirm compassion as a value that we care about as a city. I think it's important for us to emphasize and I can see this come forward and us resolve to adopt it.
Any other comments? Well, and I would agree that we have seen a lot of divisiveness and so stating that we will try to address this and make sure that there are things that we don't appreciate people not behaving well, we recall that. So I think it is part of the leadership to do that, so. But, but like I said, we will bring this up. There'll be more community groups and meetings along with this, and so, so please take a look at the links that are, have been sent to you as well. All right, so let's move on to the AWC conference. We, we had four of us still, so it was Mr. West, and then all three of us, Lindsay and myself. And I will let you start this.
Okay. So I had a great time, just, I've never been to any of the conferences. It was energetic, it was very exciting to meet some of these people, to see people from around the state that are working on similar issues. A major focus, it seemed to me, was A major focus, it seemed to me, was housing, which is not a surprise, you know, and they covered it from a real broad spectrum. They talked about the legal issues surrounding homelessness with the recent Ninth Circuit ruling against Miller versus Boise. They talked about development issues, affordable housing, zoning, they really covered a real broad spectrum about, you know, the issues that cities are dealing with. I heard really good presentation on what the city of Olympia's been doing. They really, it seems like they threw everything at the wall to see what would stick, talking about, you know, supportive housing, talking about how we deal with homelessness, which they seem like they're really, they really had a crisis around homelessness, emerging their state a few years back. They did changes in zoning. We heard, one of the really interesting ones that I found was the city of Spokane, working with a community court program, a therapeutic court model, which I know our county prosecutor had been talking about therapeutic courts in his last campaign, so that's something we might want to connect with him on. The city of Shoreline's mayor was dealing with new light rail that were planned in the city, and he had to deal with community concerns around upzoning around them because you want people to be able to get off a train and buy a cup of coffee, but the way that their zoning had been, it was illegal to open a coffee shop near the light rail. And so, you know, he had, number one, they had to fix that problem, they also had to do it in a way that addressed their community concerns. And the city of Ellensburg, I got to meet their mayor, and they had a rental vacancy rate even lower than ours, and so they've been working on lots, you know, similar problems that we have. So it was really cool to see, you know, what he was doing around those issues. One of the big stories from our state legislature, as we heard Kay talk about, was that House Bill 1406. And so there were multiple presentations that I think we all sat through where they talked about what this bill does and how it works. And I didn't have, I had some knowledge of it, but not a lot, and I didn't understand how complex it was. What the bill does is it allows cities and counties to hold on to some of the state's portion of sales tax revenue and then spend it ourselves. So it's a way for us to take that money back from the state in a way, where instead of the state, thankfully, I think AWC did a lot of lobbying with the reference bill, instead of the state saying, here's our solution on all your housing problems around the state, they let cities kind of take the lead and say, okay, as long as you're within our guidelines, you can spend your own money instead of the state's money for you. So it's a great tool for local governments to spend our money in a way that's tailored to our communities' needs. Looking at our Housing Needs Assessment and Action Plan that we just finished this last year, one of the recommendations was to establish a Port Angeles Affordable Housing Fund. So I mean, we're gonna short passage right, this is task eight in the recommendations section here at the end. It says that we should conduct a public survey of voter households to determine public support for the use of an allocation for general funds, an allocation for real estate excise tax, and they recommend this as special property tax levy or limited levy, LIDLIF, dedicated to affordable housing, and/or countywide local option sales tax dedicated to affordable housing, et cetera. And breaking that down, what they're saying is, we need to build a fund and we need to put money in it, and there's these different options on how you can do that. Well, 1406 seems kind of perfect for that. You know, we have these developments that our housing assessment is telling us that we're going to need. As Kay said, you know, she can't do it on her own, you know, she's done quite a bit, and the private market's not doing it either, when it comes to these, you know, affordable projects. We need to have this fund that can help support it, either through grants or through gap financing or to partner with mental health support. So, you know, a lot of those different funding sources trigger some unease in me, I'm sure they probably do for the rest of us. But the House Bill 1406 is just a tool that won't raise our sales tax rates. For the nuts and bolts, all, it's actually a fairly small amount of money, it's a 0.073% sales tax transfer for us, asked Serena for a really rough estimate, and that's gonna be around $27,000 a year, so that's not gonna do a lot on its own. The state says, if you have a qualifying local tax, you can double it, so you can get a .0146 instead of that 0.3. All of those different qualifying local taxes are taxes that our voters have to vote on. Many of them are not appealing to me. The one that is appealing, that I think deserves some of our attention, comes from RCW 82.14.530. It authorizes an up to 1/10 of 1% sales tax increase. And that, of course, has to be gratified by voters that we can apply to affordable housing. So, you know, we've had discussions about property taxes, this would be a sales tax increase that would pair with a sales tax credit from the state. You know, one of my thoughts on that is, we're transitioning to a tourism economy and that's not providing those high-wage family wage jobs that, you know, our industries like forestry mills are used to as in higher quantities. And so this housing crunch, you know, is coming partly because of this tourism industry transition we're having. A sales tax would then be paid through, you know, tourists would be helping to pay for the growing pains of our tourism industry. So that seems more fair to me than property tax. And, you know, I think one of the good points that was made when we were discussing LIDLIF is, property tax is the only tool our local school district has, and we don't want to stand in their way as they're trying to improve facilities. So, you know, for me, I think that we need to find a patchwork of funding to make this happen. It's gonna have to come from a lot of different sources. One source, if our voters were to authorize it, that .1 sales tax increase would raise approximately $320,000 a year, that's much more significant. You know, we don't have to authorize the full .1%, we could go half these. The .01, .46 matching for the HB 1406 would add around $55,000 a year. That House Bill 1406 is also a tool we can encourage the county to use so that they can hold a portion of their sales tax revenue and apply it to these things. And so really, if we throw a partnership with public entities, private entities, nonprofits, et cetera, we could be looking at, I think, a sizable amount of money that we could be investing in more developments like we saw Kay take across the finish line. And so, you know, it's possibly an uncomfortable topic, but I think it's something we should take a hard look at, at the worst, you know, we're leaving money on the table for the state saying we can have. And this would be a 20-year, the House Bill 1406 would take, give us a 20-year window to collect that sales tax credit.
Yeah, you're actually right, because there was a lot of conversations. We are not the only city that is facing a housing crunch, I mean, every city, every city, and some of them are actually just starting to really start making some headway into it. Lindsay, did you want to answer?
Sure, I was just trying to dig in my bag for all the stuff from Olympia, which is really amazing. But, so, House Bill 1406 was, just adopting it, I think is a no-brainer. I think it's basically the state is saying, we're gonna give you some sales tax money. And if we do it and the county does it, we split that money. But if we also have qualifying local tax, and this is the part that we learned at the conference Thursday, if we also have a qualifying local tax, then we get the same amount of House Bill 1406 money, of the state's sales tax, even if the county gets it. So it's a doubling effect. And talking to one of the state legislators afterward, she said, you know, our theory with that was, if local governments and the people of the community are willing to put some skin in the game, then the state is going to give us more of the state's sales tax revenue to work on affordable housing. So that's really the big question, is do we want to move forward with maximizing this free money from the state? I mean, free, it's our money, right? But like, they're gonna give it back to us, thanks so much. Do we want to try to maximize that? If so, we need to act before the end of July next year. So we would need to ask the voters of the state, I'm sorry, the voters of our city to approve one of these local qualified taxes. The most promising one is, as Mike mentioned, RCW 82.14.530, and ask for a sales tax increase in order to then be able to double our money with the credit of sales tax from the state under House Bill 1406. The bill is only six pages, but yet it's really confusing. I mean, there were two bond attorneys from the civil law firm who were like, yeah, we think this is how it works. So it's unfortunate, that's tough to explain, but basically the gist of it is, if we as a community say, yeah, we care about this issue, we want to generate a fund to tackle affordable housing, then the state will give us more tax revenue that is not an increase on our tax burden, but is a credit from the state's sales tax. Looking back at our Housing Action Plan items, I remember one of the things that our consultant recommended was that we have a fund in order to be able to move some of these projects forward, and there's multiple ways we could do that. And I also am looking at the Housing Action Plan survey results where people stated what were priorities, and I think it's important to emphasize this, because all of us are home up here. Everyone except maybe Director Hunter, I'm not sure if you've found a place yet, is probably a homeowner up there. So we're not necessarily dealing with these situations, but people in our community said top priority, high agreement, that we need to take care of housing for young adults, for single-headed families, especially female, service workers, elderly adults, including single individuals, special populations, including mentally ill victims of domestic abuse and the temporary homeless, and public workers, right? That not having affordable housing is hurting our economy, and this is a way, a time-sensitive way for us to take action on it. It requires, I mean, we can get this life in the state without the vote of the people in Port Angeles, but with the vote of the people in Port Angeles, we can double that money from the state and have a sizable amount of money to work with for affordable housing. So I want to throw it out because it's time-sensitive, but I think it's worth moving on.
So those who are just hearing this for the very first time, any comments, any questions? Anything that, I know, it is, it was actually quite a bit to kind of take in, but I said the state is also very aware of the need out there for housing, and so they are willing to work with cities and counties to be able to get, try to get us some funding so we can use them for housing.
Just, sorry.
This is the first time I've heard of this, but it sounds like we're asking our residents for a sales tax increase and property tax increase, and so that's gonna need a lot of explanation. Plus, perhaps we can work with our state officials on decreasing some of the requirements that have added excessive costs to building in the city of Port Angeles. We have, every three years, we increase our international building code, which has nothing to do with Port Angeles except it's detrimental to our economy and to our housing market. We have the Department of Ecology that puts layer upon layer upon layer of regulations, so you can't build anything now. We're getting down to, you build the outhouse, what is your stormwater treatment plan? I mean, it's just gotten so over-regulated within the city that it's a, and we've been told that by builders and contractors and architects that say, we're over-regulating our city to the point where it's so expensive to build it, if it doesn't pencil out, we won't build. So it's a complicated issue. So I think besides just looking at raising taxes, we also need to have a multi-pronged approach that maybe we can get some relief on some regulations that would free up investor money to build, and so there's just a lot of ways that we can get help. So this is the first time I've heard it, and I'm looking forward to further information. Thanks.
So I'd like to correct one thing, it is not looking at property taxes, it will be sales taxes. And then the other thing, you're also right about regulations, and one of the things that, you know, we were talking about is, again, if we potentially cut some of our regulations as to parking requirements, we could be able to alleviate the issue about the stormwater cost for building, because by not having that asphalt and surface that we're requiring, then that reduces the amount of paved area, therefore reduces the amount of stormwater that's happening. So that's another way to do that. Any comments?
No, not really. I just want to echo that storm, and also remember, the Department of Ecology considers gravel driveways not curricular surfaces also, so as we get into the permitting process, you know, that's gonna have an impact on what we can, you know, not offer to builders. I don't have a problem with the sales tax issue, I think those that use it should pay for it, no question about that. And I like the idea of the state giving us back some of the apartment, that would be a refreshing change. But on the other hand, it's just not, that's just not the only answer to it. I certainly agree that we need to review the administration of this because, you know, other cities are starting to find the problem with building because of not only building code, but permitting process and stormwater regulations, and listening to a person talk about building a single-family dwelling in Swin, and the permitting process was over $30,000. And so when you add that kind of money to the cost of construction, and they're not under the same stormwater regulations that we are, and so you have to be aware of, this is a multifaceted question, and whereas I agree with the option of getting some of the state money, and I have no problem with that 1% sale tax. I also would like for us to pursue aggressively administrative relief in certain areas, specifically stormwater, because again, as much as asphalt, it's because they consider gravel being packed down, that counts as a non-curricular surface.
So I just want to address some really good points that were made, because they were good points. You know, one of the other tasks in our Housing Action Plan is implement incentive zoning. And so, you know, we've had a lot of these discussions before, but all that comes to my mind is, what of these regulations do we have any control over? Because if we do, I'm right there with you, and I want to, you know, look into them and say, is this actually a good regulation? Because I think a lot of them might be hanging out there and, you know, aren't, don't have the same, you know, cost-to-benefit ratio that we would like to see. So, you know, task five in our Housing Action Plan, implement incentive zoning for cash offsets, defer permanent plan review fees for affordable units, that's part of it. Differ utility connection charges for affordable units, we have control over those things. Differ car traffic and school impact fees, those are things that we can offer to say, hey, we recognize that we are giving a high cost burden in permitting fees to some of these developments. Let's work together, get rid of that, because I think that there absolutely is work that we can do outside of just taxing our citizens and paying, because, you know, one of the other things that hasn't been brought up is that, you know, that square foot, high cost per square foot that we see in some types of public developments, I want to drive that down. I want to get rid of some of these regulations if they don't make sense, I want to address that. We have a planning permission that we can pass to say, hey, what of these regulations are in our control? What of them can we, you know, address? Because if we really are, you know, increasing the cost of development so far that it doesn't pencil out, I want to do something about it.
I would say yes and to everything people have said. One of the companion bills that the state legislature passed is House Bill 1923, and it addresses, it provides some benefits to local governments if we adopt some of these changes that help to increase housing capacity. As long as we adopt them before April 1st of 2021, no joke, we, there's some additional benefits for that. There's possibly even funding, although it's mostly allocated for cities, over $20,000, so we don't quite make that. But Kathy Morgan of the Holy Cap is connecting us with the low-income housing lines to see kind of where that funding might be. But, so yeah, there's an emphasis on let's make sure that we get rid of the regulatory red tape that prohibits housing, you know, that's what the RNO may really, as well as the state has, you know, an obligation to do that in my opinion as well. But let's also, you know, see this money, whether it's for building new housing or whether it's for refurbishing or maintaining older housing. I think one of the things that I took away from the Housing Action Plan was the need to maintain your existing housing stock. Because if we're losing housing, because, you know, people are trying to live in place and their house goes into disrepair, and then they die, their house dies as well, if we're losing housing and we're building housing, we're just staying even. What we need to do is increase our total net stock of housing units and choices for people within Port Angeles. And so it's not just about building new housing, it's going to be about maintaining the existing housing stock. housing stock.
I just took one point I forgot to make, and that's, you know, at the beginning of the process of doing that Housing Action Plan, gathered all those people together, having these frank discussions, there's a lot of organizations that were interested in, and that had a need. The Coast Guard, the hospital, the college, they all have huge housing needs, they're economic, like, you know, in many ways. We don't know what they might come forward with once we have seen them again, once we show them we are serious, we're not just, you know, talking about this. And so, you know, we have made a lot of good changes, I think already as a result of that Housing Action Plan. I, I really think that the, the sales tax is something we should consider if we weren't want to start. And, and one of the things I would point out, saying that, you know, we should put it on the ballot isn't saying that, to me, what's that is saying is, do our citizens want this? Do our citizens view this issue as salient? Or do they think that this is something that they want their government to, you know, engage in? They might say no, and that's fine. If they say no, then they've told us what they think.
All right. So I just want to pipe in on the one other thing that was mentioned at the AWC conference, which is interesting. It was talking about probably the green economy, and they called them the economics sectors. And so there was four of them, that they felt like Washington State was very well poised to move forward in these things. First one was energy, and they said that we are very competitive in delivering the grid distribution, the grid restorations, renewable fuels that are low carbon, and the Green Tech Alliance are really pushing this forward. The second one was water, which I thought was kind of interesting. You know, talking about all the waters local, but the demands are not unique, and talk about potable water, irrigation, wastewater, and gray water, and down. So how to deal with that, apparently we do have a lot of experience with it, and we're doing it well, and so that is something else that could grow. The third one, we didn't cover very well, but he talked about the agriculture and forestry area, so that's another area that we obviously grow trees here very well. And then the last one was building materials, and he specifically covered the cross-laminated timber and the HBHC systems. So, so for building materials, Washington State is well poised to continue to grow, so I just thought that that was kind of interesting to add to the discussions of what's going to be the WTC. So, yeah, that's all I had. Anything else? All right. Any comments?
Sorry, Kate, we really missed you.
I really wanted to go, and it was a really busy week at work, so it was a wise thing to, to send.
We got to take some real cool stuff and smoke out too.
All right, thank you for going.
All right. So we are going to now move on to contracts and purchasing. Parks, maintenance, building, purchase, day one.
Good evening, Fatah Mayor and Council. Thanks for having me tonight. Today I bring forth the council a very important issue for the Parks and Markets Department. I'm sure you've heard Corey assess how important the Parks Maintenance Team is to the city, or really just as the backbone of the Parks and Markets Department. As you're in the council memo, on December 14th, the Parks Maintenance Crew lost their maintenance building, a large tree fell, building destroyed it. Thankfully none was injured in the incident, but the staff was forced to store equipment and vehicles on various city facilities with no place to go. They used a small room as a break room at the long tiered field only until the small season started in February. This gave them some time to work, but the port of Port Angeles on a short-term solution, and they're using a small portion of the former West Port Building for a break room. We're currently working on more a long-term solution with the port until new shop can be built. So during this timeframe, the owner and president of Fatah's Marine, Judson, like very often for the city, a chance to purchase an unassembled prefab metal building, that they had purchased and engineered prior to the purchasing of former Sunset Wire and Grove Building. So once that building was purchased, they had no use for the prefab building, and Mr. Linnery offered the building that was valued at $296,872 for half the cost, with an additional $12,000 added to move the unassembled building. So the total purchase would be $160,436.25. The city has received insurance money for the destroyed park shop in the amount of $123,097.46, and it will need an additional $37,338.79 from the general fund reserves to be able to purchase the new building. The new building will allow the Parks Maintenance Crew to go from an outdated and overcrowded 1970s 2,000 square foot building to a much larger building at 6,000 square feet. This will allow the crew to centralize all of their equipment and keep most of their equipment inside during the harsher weather times, and also gives the ex- opportunity to expand. So tonight it is our recommendation, that one, the council approved and authorized the city manager to sign the purchase agreement with the Fatah's Marine, and that includes a 50-year warranty with General Steel Buildings, and to make minor modifications to the agreement if needed. And so with that, either I or city manager last to be able to answer your questions.
All right. Council, any questions?
I move to approve and authorize the city manager to sign the purchase agreement with Fatah's Marine Inc. and a 50-year warranty with General Steel Buildings, and number two, make minor modifications to the agreement if necessary.
Second.
I do believe this is a, an appropriate move. I believe it, getting a steel building for half cost is just, we're lucky. We're, we're just lucky that they didn't need it, and we, we definitely need it, and I believe it will save money, but we're in a position where it would cost so much more to outsource, to go out and, and replace it with, from originally a, a new building. So I'm happy that we came across this at the time we needed it, and I think that people in with the, the Parks Maintenance Shop have been very patient up until now, so I hope they can get into the building quickly.
This is more of a concern, it's, I mean, what, I mean, it's a great deal to pick this up. That's a lot of building right there. My concern is how long, before we have the funding to move forward with this demolition, I mean, it's not in here expensive, moving it back on there, permit, erecting that building, I mean, I'm, I'm sure it's probably in the hundreds of thousands to do all that, and I just, I don't want to see us get this building and have the thing sit there on the ground for a, for an extended period of time. And I'm not sure what funding can be used to get this moving forward, to build it. I mean, the insurance, obviously it was a pretty piddly amount. And it's like you can have a $200 car, and you'll, the thing get crashed, and you could never replace the value of what that is to you. So I get they're only going to pay what they're going to pay, but my concern, although this is a great deal, is what the future brings for that building being put up and moving forward.
So Council, Steph certainly appreciates the concern, and I think that's, it's a relevant discussion point to have. I think when you look at the reality of constructing a new building, you're talking about costs in the millions of dollars. And so this is an opportunity that financially makes great sense for the city. One, because we still have some insurance coming in to cover the immediate purchase of the building, but we also are working in the future towards getting additional reimbursement from FEMA. And I think those pieces of the puzzle are extremely important. There is a time, timing issue relative to Fatah's Marine, and they very much need to move this along or sell it to someone who might pay them a great deal more for this building. So it's, it's a short-term opportunity, and yes, there are more decisions to come with City Council, and that includes the demolition of the building, some costs that we'll have to incur relative to demolition of the building, as well as the actual construction costs of those buildings, of the building itself. So that's to come in the future, and I would say that, but in this scenario, you are far more likely to be in the smaller hundreds of thousands of dollars as opposed to the millions if we were starting from scratch. And ultimately, at the end of the day, we do have a building that holds value, and could be sold to someone else if we didn't even use it at the end of the day.
I'd say my concern is just, just get rolling.
So do we have any estimate or estimates as to the demolition cost, and also as to, I mean, obviously, if the footprint of the first one was 2,000 square feet, and now it's 6,000, obviously the concrete base and the whole thing has changed.
I don't think that the concrete base will change all that much. It's more of a below, it's going to have a basement option, and so I don't think that it's 6,000 square foot all spread out. I know that at least most of it will be underneath, but the exact, I don't know.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, so we've got a motion on the table and a second. Let's see if there's any further discussion. All those who've voted in a motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes in the Senate. Thank you, Steph. Appreciate it. All right, so moving on to the Lords and Boulevard Overlay Contract.
Yes, thank you, Council. So really quickly, before we get into the details, we're going to want to describe to you a very minor change that is reflected in this memo as to the way that the project was bid and the way that we are recommending that we move forward for this project. The purpose or the intent of this memo is to award construction for the Lords and Boulevard Overlay Project. This project will include the engineering, pedestrian traffic improvements, the Lords and Boulevard, pedestrian lanes, streets, and the Lords of Court, while implementing traffic and plumbing methods, pedestrian safety measures, and improving media accessibility. When we look at the first section, just to summarize in this memo, we see that there was a base bid, and then there was an additive one. I think that we want to be very clear about the intent of capturing the costs for additive one as opposed to lumping everything into the same bid. Essentially, the engineering staff, due to the funding availability for this project, identified there was components of the project that could come in over budget because of how busy private contractors are, specifically the electrical industry. And so instead of using the base bid to capture the rapid flash beacons, they put it as additive, anticipating that we could see increased costs relative to total funding source. They were correct, and that portion of the bid came in much higher than what we had anticipated. And so at this time, I'll read our recommendation, and then I can definitely answer any questions or clarification. The recommendation is that we approve and authorize the city, or the council approve and authorize the city manager to award the base bid and sign a construction contract with Lakeside Industries, who was the largest hospital there, Port Angeles, Washington, for the Lords and Boulevard Overlay Project TR0515 for the base bid amount of $933,105.0, including applicable taxes, and make minor modifications to the contract if necessary. Recommendation number two is to reject the additive bid from Lakeside Industries Incorporated, Port Angeles, Washington. To be clear, the engineer's estimate for additive number two, or additive one, sorry, was $42,000, and the bid at the beginning was almost $90,000. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions?
It says here that it's solar-powered retarder rapid flash beacons. I'm not sure if that, if they are in roadway or is that for the crosswalks or?
Yes, these are, these are for pedestrian crosswalks, and essentially, they, they're relatively easy to install, and we got quotes on the, on the purchase, but the labor is what was really increased by the contractor. And so we identified this as a project concurrent with bidding specifications, and part of manual, the public works department can actually do this work at a later date.
Okay. Thank you. So are they similar to the, what's I said, Field?
Yeah.
Race Street.
I'm going to trust.
At the open house at the library, which was really well-intended, really well-done by staff, there's a lot of conversation about the crosswalks along the words, and these obviously voices are a wide, and people don't master the nice shoot that they're supposed to, over the co-motive speed sign for. And so these are basically flashing crosswalks like at Civic Field. One of the things that came up, and this probably isn't a question you want to try to tell right now, is Jonathan Bohm, who's an engineer, just come back from a pedestrian safety or pedestrian training, and he said that one of the things that they've learned was, if you put in a crosswalk without all the bells and whistles and flashing things that you know is best practice, we're more liable as a city. I don't quite understand it, maybe I'm not the right kind of attorney. That's a question I have following up on this, is what are we missing out on here? What's additional liability? If we know we should add those flashers, but we don't do it?
Yeah, and we can look into that. You know, I will add that there's a lot of research out there that informs any TC into different options for illumination and pedestrian access and safety. You know, as far as a couple of years ago, the notion was that we should put flashing beacons in the actual sidewalks, but what studies found is that it actually draws the driver's attention to the road and not to the edges, so you can see pedestrians starting to access the right of way. It's all kind of a paradigm that swings back and forth. I think that the anticipation for this project, however, is that as the project is completed during this year, that we'll see, there won't be a huge lag between when public works is able to get those incorporated into pedestrian facilities. So I don't anticipate a lot of time coming to progress, but we're happy to discuss that further, and any basic.
I noticed that there is a lot of pedestrian safety measures built into this. I, I love the term pedestrian refuge islands, so we're going to have a little pleasure with pedestrian facility now, yeah. So, and that's fine, but, so, you know, from, just from a number standpoint, and forgive me for referring back to that, but the difference between a, not almost, you know, doubling the cost of this, whereas, you just said we can buy it and put it in ourselves, is, is very attractive. And again, looking at this, there, we are dramatically improving Lordson as it is from a pedestrian standpoint, so I would be in favor of this proceeding this, on this way, and getting a more reasonable cost. I'm not opposed to those flashing lights, I go to Civic Field virtually every lefty thing, and I use that. But having said that, it would be, it would be in the city's best interest to get a more reasonable bid on it than, than twice the cost, so thanks for that time.
And then I think the other part of that is, when we improve these roads and show pedestrians that we value, you know, and bicyclists that we value their safety, that increases use, and that changes driver behavior. Because then the drivers notice, oh, there's a crosswalk there, people are using it, just like the Civic Field one. I think drivers are more aware that that crosswalk gets used, and so they don't approach it with great speed. So I think that that's moving in exactly the direction we should be moving in. I agree with everything Jim said about the financial responsibility of rejecting that additive bid. Have we made a motion on this yet?
I don't believe we have.
I move to award the base bid and sign a construction contract with Lakeside Industries and Port Angeles, Washington, for the Lordson Boulevard Overlay Project TR0515 for the base bid amount of $933,105, including applicable taxes, make minor modifications to the contract if necessary, and to reject the additive bid from Lakeside Industries and Port Angeles, Washington.
That's true. Well done.
I did the second of you, but it's not my turn.
One comment on this too, that came up in the open house, was that this is far away an overlay project with pedestrian, it was safety improvements and other non-moderized safety improvements built in. It's not a overhaul of Lordson Boulevard, and there were a lot of great suggestions about ways to address.
of great suggestions about ways to address the conflicts at Peabody and Lord's End, for example, or other places along Lord's End. But I think it's important for folks to know, like, this is mostly about repaving Lord's End and doing what we can in the process, rather than redesigning the whole street.
Right. Any further comments? Okay, we've got a motion on the table and a second. All those who favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes in and out. Thank you, Council. And that takes us pretty much down to Council reports. Council on McKinnon, start again.
I happen to have a business that is kind of its pulse on the economy in Port Angeles. If you want to know people moving in, ask the U-Haul dealer. If you want to know people moving out, ask the U-Haul dealer. People are moving here for jobs with McKinley. Very encouraging. So, I have the pleasure and have since I've been on Council, especially with Fundless Mayor, but I still do it. I give them, I make them give me their hand. I give them the official handshake on behalf of the Port Angeles City Council, and I welcome, officially welcome them to Port Angeles. And you know, they never forget. They feel like this is a friendly place. But people are moving here, and McKinley's cranking up, so good news.
Pool board meeting? Tuesday, Monday?
Yesterday.
Yesterday. Pool board meeting yesterday, and hopefully, we'll be moving forward with the pool. See more action down over there.
I just want to, I think I mentioned this in my last council report when we had our
kickoff, so I just wanted to remind everyone and encourage anyone who would like to join me in this month's 5210 Challenge. It is a project of Health Communities, the Olympic Peninsula Healthy Communities Coalition. I was really encouraged by Eric Lewis's brief talk at the kickoff about the hospital support of this project, and really starting to think more proactively about prevention as a way the hospital should be approaching healthcare. So, they're trying to, he was informed during the meeting that they're gonna have 800 employees join the challenge, which is essentially half of their employees. So, he was a little surprised to hear that. Last year, they had 100, so it's a big leap. So, the five is five fruits and vegetables, five stories of fruits and vegetables a day. The two is no more than two hours of recreational screen time, so that includes, you know, social media on your phone, watching TV, et cetera. The one is one hour of physical activity a day, and the zero is zero sugar-sweetened beverages, to include, we were informed, beer and wine. So, anyway, if anyone would like to join me, I'm one of the healthy leaders in the group, and I have materials. If any council members would like to join me, any city staff, see me after the meeting, and I'll make plans to connect with you.
Alright.
Because I think I get points for signing people up, too. So, join my team.
Can you clarify what the zero is again?
Zero, zero sugar-sweetened beverages. So, no juice, no pop. There is recognizing that people are human and accommodation for alternative sweeteners. If you need to wean yourself off of, for example, you have a daily Coca-Cola habit, you can switch to Diet Coke if you need to, in the interim. Thankfully, I don't have that problem, but that's the zero.
No sugar in your coffee?
No sugar in your coffee.
Jeez, think carefully.
Alright, good luck with that. So, I, let's see, last council meeting, at Calum Transit, I think it's worth mentioning that Calum Transit got 10 new buses awarded. It's gonna be a couple of years till they get on the road because they're especially built. But that includes, hopefully, looking at some buses specially designed for the straight shot, beginning to make a commitment toward a midday straight shot, which I'm probably still a couple of years on. But, you know, I think the consensus of Calum Transit Board and staff is that that's a successful route, and should be exploited and hopefully expanded. You know, funding and all that pending, of course. There's a lot to say about the Association of Washington Cities Conference, which was fantastic. One thing I think I want to say about it is connecting back to council member Kim's comment. I lived in Spokane for three years when I was going to grad school, and loaded up a U-Haul outside of an apartment on the west side of downtown, drove to Port Angeles, unloaded it. Next day, I put my bike in the back and I dropped it off, and Sherry said, "Well, good for Port Angeles." Very awesome. So, thank you for welcoming me back in 2013.
You never forget it.
I don't, no. It's absolutely true. So, back in Spokane, one of the workshops I did was, just last week, was a trip to some of their waste, well, they're doing a CSO project, just like we did. They didn't have a big kind of industrial tank like we use for our reservoirs, so they're building like 10 massive reservoirs throughout the city, basically giant underground storage tanks, like two and a half times the size of Olympic, swimming pool sort of thing. And one of them that we visited on this field trip was right behind the apartment that I used to live in, and they covered it with a park. So, you have no idea that you're on top of this massive storage tank. It's now this neighborhood park. It used to be just this, like, broken brick filled lot behind our apartment. And then, right next to that is part of Riverside Avenue, and they have a little dog park there. And then, part of Riverside Avenue, right near where I used to live, was a path, and no longer a road. And I'm like, what happened to the road? And so, I asked their Public Works Director, who was leading the tour, I'm like, it looks like you decommissioned part of that road. What's up with that? And his response was, we think of roads as liabilities. And, you know, there's a maintenance cost to them. If they're not being used to the capacity that we're expecting, we think about a better uses for them. And that's what they did there, that that particular part of Riverside Avenue, very few cars were making that turn and going down that side of that Millard. And so, they saw a better use for it, and they turned it into a path connected with that park. So, I was really impressed by that way of thinking about their public space in Spokane. So, I'll share other things about the A W C conference, all the future meetings. One note, though, before Allison leaves at the end of the meeting, is I got a number of copies of the Department of Commerce's 2019 Housing Bills for Planners for your gift from the A W C conference. Unfortunately, I couldn't find housing bills for fire chiefs, or police chiefs, or finance directors, or city attorneys, or city clerks, or anything else. So, unfortunately, Allison is all you.
I'd say the Chamber of Commerce board meeting. We had an update about the progress in fencing about Memorial Park. Karen Rogers has had a lot of great success in getting in-kind donations to lower the costs involved in that fundraising effort. We discussed the chamber's next steps in coordinating all the players involved in downtown development. They've already hosted one meeting, and I think Allison was able to go to that, I'm not sure. And I think that they're gonna have some really positive results in coordinating all those players that are involved in that downtown development, so that we have devoted paid efforts, and so that we have, you know, as many efficiencies as we can identify, as all these different projects are happening. And I think they actually, speaking of that, they were having a hiring event. They're, the chamber is helping McKinley with, so I think that's next week. I couldn't be wrong. I have two articles that I wanted to highlight, one is serious, one is not. So, the first one was an article from the Seattle Times Traffic Lab, and we just had a discussion about pedestrian safety. I'll just read a little short section. The headline was, "To Improve Intersection Safety, Seattle Is Giving Pedestrians a Head Start." So, you can Google that if you wanted to find it. The new signal is called "Leading Pedestrian Intervals, LPIs," displays a walk symbol for 37 seconds for pedestrians crossing the street before drivers are given the green light to move forward or turn. The head start is intended to make pedestrians more visible and to encourage drivers to be able to ride away. Current work is funded by a $450,000 grant, or a November from the Washington State Department of Transportation's City Safety Program, and Wash adopted another grant to make additional work possible. So, there's, you know, they're trying new things to get drivers to understand that pedestrians are able to ride away during these stops. So, I thought that was really great. And yeah, I'm sure that it's not as simple as just snapping your fingers and making it happen, as it costs a lot of money for them. But that's an interesting idea that I came across. On a lighter note, I did come across a short blog on a humor website called McSwinney's.net that was called "Every NIMBY's Speech at a Public Hearing" by Chad Celeste, and it was a really snarky thing, but there's this one section, I think, that I'll just read really quickly. It says, quote, "I think we as citizens need to make a few things clear. The first thing is, we aren't Madison. We aren't Boulder. We aren't Terre Haute. So, when I hear a member of the council saying, 'Well, Olympia,' like I just said, made a few small but substantive changes in such and such an area, and the results have been promising empirically,' what that council member fails to understand is, we aren't Olympia. We aren't Tacoma. We aren't Tamper's. We aren't Portland State. Are we Scottsdale? No, we are not. And all this so-called evidence about how policies have worked at other towns simply does not apply to us. No evidence applies to us. Our town exists in a fog of mystery and enigmatic strangeness, and nothing that happens outside city boundaries should have any bearing on how we govern our existence." And just for the record, I'm really grateful that people do comment publicly here. I'm really glad that's satire and not an accurate interpretation of how people comment in our city councils.
Alright, Jim.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
That was the least snarky part of the article. I can only wait for the next one.
Two things. First of all, I attended the Northland Development Council's monthly meeting, and we were introduced to the Wealth Works model, the Rural Development Initiative from New York, and we'll be working with the N O D C and its partners to develop a plan to use the Wealth Works model, and you can find it, Michael, at wealthworks.org. And to strengthen regional economies based on capital, a chain of capital, such as financial, social, intellectual, cultural, political, natural, and individual capital. And it's a chain model of this. It's very fascinating. So, if you go to wealthworks.org, wealthworks1word.org, you'll find this chain model that the N O D C is gonna embark to help with developing a stronger regional economy. And so, I'm excited about that. And second thing, I'll bring, we had a great trip. I had, last Saturday, drove the senior center bus to Snoopy Falls. And if you haven't been to Snoopy Falls, the falls are gorgeous this time of year. And also, there's the Northwest Railroad Museum there. It's an actual working railroad circa 1890. And you can take about an hour and a half ride on this old railroad thing. And the kids, I knew that lovingly, had a great time. And so, and you'll be happy to know, I bought the bat bus. I haven't wanted to be so far there. But anyway, I encourage you to participate, if you're a senior center member, to participate in the trips that they've offered. Some of them are just out of the world, and it's on time to get me as your driver.
Thank you, Ben. So, let's see, the R T P O, the Regional Participation, I guess it's been, thank you, organization for the peninsula. So, we have all the cities participate, and so, we've got new bylaws. Everybody's on board. And so, and they also just bought a new sound system, so instead of having to drive to these meetings, we can now actually call in and hopefully hear each other much better. So, that was a big deal. The disability board that's coming up, it'll be the very first time that our numbers are really low. I'm hoping it stays that way. There was a, we had, I guess, one client that was in the list that passed away, and so, the medical costs for Port Angeles have dropped. So, the Lord's and Trust is going through refinancing, so now, we're gonna go with the Davidson to go ahead and take care of the finances for the, I guess, the investments. So, the will is just saying that it had to be in mortgages. All that has changed, and so, we're now updating, finally getting that trust updated. At A W C, I had my very first scooter ride. I bought, I got the little line thing and the app, and it actually all worked. It was great. And I also did my first Uber ride. So, those apps and the phone, it was actually fun. So, you know, maybe we can get scooters out here. You just get the little app and the little scooter, it's great.
As the youngest member of Council, I've never taken a Uber.
You've never taken an Uber, have you? I have never taken one either. And everybody talks about, oh, well, there's Uber, and there's, you know, anyway. So, give it a go, and it worked. And then, we had a meeting with the folks from N O D C, with, I guess, at that point, we had Jefferson County Commissioner and some folks from SWIM, looking at the climate change and policies. And so, quickly put together a matrix, app went through it, I went ahead and submitted it to the group. Ideally, everybody's gonna be able to put in their list of ordinance or code that they are following that deals with climate change, so we can very quickly kind of compare what everybody's doing. And so, I think that would be a good beginning to see what some jurisdictions are doing and whether we should do it or not. It'll make it easier, I hope. Anyway, so, that is my report.
Excuse me. Pardon for interrupting, but I would like to mention something about the Fourth of July celebration that's coming up that's being sponsored by the Congress's fireworks display. It was inserted in the newspaper, but my wife is at home tonight baking 12 dozen cupcakes. So, if you have children that are involved in Child's Fair that starts at noon, but as Mike knows, there's just a ton of activities that are being presented. Our Senior America will be wearing the Clippers in a parade. She's got her wave down, so this is gonna be wonderful. So, anyway, I really encourage everybody to come out for the Fourth of July, celebrate the nation's birth, and enjoy the festivities that are being put on from top to bottom. My friend in the corner will contest again this year, so stay away from that.
And it's true. So, just to a reminder, you know, if you want to light fireworks, you need to go to the county to do that. Right now, we don't, we don't do them here in the city. And also, I was told about that apple, you know, baking that apple pie. I will not get to it this year. I thought it was gonna be, I'm not gonna be able to. So, if anybody wants to bake an apple pie and put it in the contest, there's lots of slots available, so please do so. Alright, so, from that, now, it's rest.
Madam Mayor, Council, I have a number of items for you this evening. I wanted to start out with an update to the Council Annual Calendar, which I know you would have liked to see at your last meeting, but we do have an update for you this evening. It's in your packet, and again, page L1 is where it's located. But I want to draw your attention to a number of items. In particular, at your last meeting, you did request a presentation on Parks and Recreation and what's going on with Parks and Recreation, so we're gonna provide that to you as a work session item from 5:00 to 6:00 on July 16th. So, that's coming up at your next meeting. I also want to point out to you that we did move back the vacant properties work session by one month to make that the August work session. I think the staff needs some additional time to prepare for that. And then, I also want to point out that C E D staff has already done a really good job of moving forward, basically, the low-hanging fruit of the Housing Needs Assessment, and that's an item that actually went to Planning Commission last week. And it's anticipated that in September, they will bring forward to Council some housing-related code amendments that help take care of some of those easier-to-implement items that ultimately make logical sense relative to the recommendation from the Housing Needs Assessment. In addition to that, there's a few other changes in the calendar. I'd encourage you to take a look at that. But I also want to emphasize the value of the A W C conference, and that I, too, found a great deal of value in that conference. And I think one of the best lessons learned was, the conference as a whole was about building communities. And I think, as we saw with some good example communities, many of them were successfully able to resolve their housing issues with a multi-faceted approach, making sure that we're not just tackling one particular issue or item, that we're moving forward with many attempts, because ultimately, there is no silver bullet. We need to make sure that we're taking a diverse approach, a number of different methods to actually get it right and to move forward. I think that's really valuable. I also found a great deal of value in the overall legislative recognition of rural communities, recognizing that the I-5 corridor and Saddle area are doing quite well, and that the rural communities such as ours still need a lot of legislative attention and legislative help. And I think that attention is there. I think many of the legislators are ready and willing to do what it takes to help jurisdictions such as ours moving forward, which brings up a legislative priority of this council, and therefore, I think it's really important to provide an update to council. Council will remember that we did send a detailed letter to the Department of Ecology, including a matrix outlining concerns we had with the new drafted National Pollution Discharge Elimination outlining concerns we had with the new drafted National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit. We never received a response to that letter, unfortunately. But we did have a call with Department of Ecology last week and we're informed by Ecology that we would actually receive that final permit yesterday, July 1st. We did receive it. We're in the process of digesting what we've received. It may take some time to do that, but ultimately we have 30 days to appeal that permit if for any reason it's not acceptable to us. So we'll be diving in, taking a look at the permit details, looking at the responsiveness to comments as a whole. Were they responsive to the comments that we submitted or not? So hopefully we'll have another update for you very soon on that matter. That's it from staff, but thank you, council, so much for this evening's meeting. Really appreciate it.
Thank you all for the information. So now we are at the second public comment period. So anybody in the audience who would like to address council on, Annie Agarwitz-Loper, please step up to the left, state your name and whether you live in the city or not.
Hello again. My name is Brendan Meyer. I do live in the city. I, about four months ago, I was concerned with homeless people sleeping outside and downtown businesses not looking so hot, so decided to inform myself. Started coming to city council meetings, started coming to planning committee, planning committee commission meetings. I think I missed one or two, but one of my big things is I'm a huge proponent of open government. I think you guys have done a great job of showcasing everything, but it could be more. We live in the 21st century, 2019. We could be live streaming this to multiple social platforms. And I've been walking around talking to people and a lot of people don't know what's going on in the city. There's a lot of rumors and stuff like that. And I think by bringing people in with this kind of technology, it's just gonna be better for our community. It'll distinguish some of the rumors and stuff like that. So I would like to see some more video and audio, because I've listened to a few meetings and it's terrible to like sit through and listen to them. It's got like their own proprietary player and you lose track, you close a window and you can't skip back to it, it's terrible. So yes, I would like to see a lot of video. It is closed captioning for people who can't hear. There's a lot of things out there today, so thank you.
Thank you. It's a good suggestion. I know we've had it often and I know we've talked about it, so hopefully Tech has been able to continue to work on that, yeah. Anybody else in the audience who would like to address council at this time? All right. We'll see none. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it.